I would like to call to order the February 22nd, 2021, meeting of the City of Clayton Planning Commission. Ms. Sim, can you please call the roll for attendance?
Mills.
Present.
Robinson. Gardner.
Present.
Palace. And Pritchett.
Present.
Thank you.
I would like to start by asking all members of the public to keep your audio on mute until called upon to allow this body to proceed through the steps of the meeting in an orderly fashion. When we get to the new business, I will ask Mr. Dorman to make the staff presentation on the agenda item. After the staff presentation, I will ask the applicant if they would like to make a presentation or add anything to what staff presented. After the applicant has presented, has completed their presentation, I will ask Planning Commission if they have any initial questions for the staff and the applicant. And once the commission has asked initial questions of the staff and applicant, I will ask for a motion to open the floor to public comment. Once the public comment period has started, we will be calling each member of the public one at a time to make a comment or for or against the proposed application. And we'd like to be able to recognize the public by asking you to raise your hand on your Zoom call application. And then that way we'll know who's wanting to make a presentation or ask any questions or make any comments tonight. So, once it's public period has started, public comment period, we'll be asking each member of one at a time. Each person will have up to three minutes to make their comments. We will be keeping the time and we'll ask to, and we'll have to cut you off when you get to your allotted time. In the interest of saving time, I have asked that no duplicate comments are made. When it's your turn to speak, please state your name and address, the residence for the record, and you can make any comment to the Planning Commission. Do not direct your comment or specifically ask the applicant a question. The purpose of the public comment period is to help the Planning Commission understand the public's concerns, which will help us when we get to the end of the hearing. And we'll be making a recommendation to City Council to approve, approve with conditions, or disapprove the zoning district change. Once the public comments have been received, I will ask the Planning Commission for a motion to close the public comment period. Once the public comment period has been closed, I will ask for the applicant if they would like to respond to any of the comments received by the public. Once the applicant has finished responding to comments received from the public, I will ask for the Planning Commission members, one at a time, if they have any questions for the staff or the applicant. Once the Planning Commission has had an opportunity to ask their questions to staff and applicant, I will call for a motion from Planning Commission for one of the following recommendations to City Council. Approve the zoning district as submitted, the district change as submitted, or approve the zoning district change with conditions, or disapprove the zoning district change. Once that motion has been moved and received, a second, I will ask Ms. Sim to please call the roll by motion. We need a minimum of three yays and the motion carries. If we receive three yays, which is a majority vote, I'll be asking for a new, if we receive less than three yays, I would be asking for a new motion that will follow the same process. This will proceed until the Planning Commission is able to pass a motion with a majority vote. Thank you for all your interest in the agenda items before us tonight. Thank you in advance for following those rules that I have set out tonight. For those in the public that wish to speak for or against, I need to administer the speaker oath. So, while we can't see you all, we're going to trust that you're doing this. Please raise your right hand as you listen to the oath, and if you can agree to the oath, signify by saying "I do." For any, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give to this commission is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please say "I do." Thank you. We need to, at this time, I'm hoping that everybody's had a chance to read the minutes from the January 25th meeting. Does anyone have any suggested changes to the minutes of the January 25th meeting? All right, then I will accept the motion and a second to approve the minutes of January 25th, 2021, meeting as written.
Make a motion to approve, Garner.
I second the motion, Pritchett.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Sim, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Bills?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
And Ms. Pritchett?
Aye.
Thank you.
So normally, we would turn to old business, but there is no business on the agenda to come before the commission tonight. So, moving on to new business before is, before is tonight is case number PC 21-01, 6892 Salem Avenue, William and Mary Lauer. The request is for a zoning district change for the property at 6892 Salem Avenue, parcel M 60, 03207 0015, from R 3 Suburban Residential to I General Industrial District. The applicant intends to market and sell their property as part of the industrial acreage to the west. The request was made by William and Mary Lauer, property owners. Mr. Dorman, do you have a case to present to us tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Bills. I do. Planning Commissioners, good evening. I just wanted to start with a point of order clarification. We have two members out ill this evening, and so a motion from the Planning Commission this evening would require two affirmative votes to pass instead of three. Thank you. Next slide. The application in front of us this evening is to change the zoning district of 6892 Salem Avenue from R 3 to I. The parcel involved has an area of 6.12 acres. The properties surrounding this parcel are zoned as follows. To the west is I General Industrial. There's 51-plus acres that were rezoned last year. To the north across Salem Avenue is R 3. There are a couple existing single-family residences next to the Hunter's Glen condos. To the east is R 3. There are some existing single-family residences along Salem Avenue. And to the south is R 3. That's the Bayberry Trail subdivision. It's the, we call it also the Summersweet Platte. The applicant is planning to market and sell their six acres as part of the 51-plus acres that were rezoned to I on January 15th, 2020. Next slide. Like to show you the surrounding area. I've tried to highlight the property in yellow. You can kind of make it out, I guess, on the screen. Next slide. And then, this is the subject property, so it's a little easier to tell. Again, I've highlighted the area in yellow. As you can see, across the street are the Hunter's Glen's condos. To the south is the Bayberry Trail subdivision. You've got the Casey's there, east at the corner of Union and Salem, and also the Meadow Brook Crossing Shopping Center. Just to kind of give you perspective of where this sits, it's west of the Union Road intersection. Next slide. So, when considering a rezoning, we look at our guiding documents for direction. We've got the Clayton Planning and Zoning Code. Chapter 1126 has to do with district changes and code amendments. It sort of outlines our process and the application requirements. Chapter 1137 is the R 3 Suburban Residential District. That's the current zoning on the property, and that just kind of outlines the permitted accessory and conditional uses for the existing zoning. Chapter 1157 is the district, chapter for I General Industrial, and again outlines the permitted accessory and conditional uses. And then, of course, we have Plan Clayton, which is our comprehensive land use plan. Next slide. Current zoning is R 3, and primarily permits single-family residences and those uses that are customarily accessory or conditional to residential. The proposed zoning is I General Industrial, which primarily permits industrial, warehouse, manufacturing, office, healthcare, and institutional uses. Next slide. So, Plan Clayton. Plan Clayton envisions the subject property and those to the east along State Route 49 as commercial. However, Plan Clayton, in the implementation guide, which is another portion of Plan Clayton, it outlines improvements to State Route 49 Salem Avenue to accommodate the growth of industry on this corridor. Next slide. So, the implementation plan is part of the Great Streets and Infrastructure Goal, which is Goal 4, has a section called Transportation Element, and those are pages 14 and 25 in the implementation plan for Plan Clayton, which includes the following statements that I'd like to read to you for the record. So, objective number four is to upgrade State Route 49 to accommodate industrial expansion. It's on page 14 of the implementation plan. At the time the plan was completed, 10% of the traffic on State Route 49 was heavy truck, truck traffic, and the road speed limit is 50 miles per hour, I believe it still is. Pavement, it goes on to say that pavement on State Route 49 should be, when reconstructed, should accommodate overweight vehicles, and the intersections turning radii for those vehicles should be increased. Increases in total traffic, and in particular, heavy truck traffic can be expected to occur along this roadway, as infill occurs to promote more industrial development. Again, that's a statement from the Plan Clayton Implementation Plan. And it also goes on to say that this will complicate safety and access for the individual residential properties along the corridor unless future development results in conversion of the properties to non-residential use. Next slide. So, I went back and I looked at the 1999 Land Use Plan, and I looked at an earlier draft of Plan Clayton, and there is historical precedence for uses for this property and those properties along Salem Avenue to the east that's more intense than residential and commercial. So, if you look at the 1999 Land Use Plan, this property and the properties to the east along Salem Avenue were contemplated to be a mix of light manufacturing, research and development facilities, office uses, and corporate training facilities. An earlier draft of Plan Clayton from June 2017, that was about halfway through the Plan Clayton process, showed those properties all as industrial. That got changed at the direction of City Council prior to final approval, where they scaled back some of the industrial areas. Next slide. So, after review of the application and the guiding documents, staff recommends that the Planning Commission make a motion of, to recommend approval of the zoning district change from R 3 to I. I will put up the, next slide, I will put up the map just to kind of keep up for discussion. Happy to answer any questions that you might have. Ben, next slide. Thank you. Sure. I don't have a laser pointer available, but if you look at the bottom right-hand corner of that 1999 Land Use Map, there's a north-south road that crosses 49, and to the right is a green area. That's Meadow Brook Golf Course. To the left is a triangle area of purple. So, the 51 acres that were rezoned to industrial last January, and this parcel, and then the parcels east along Salem up to Union, you can see are all shown as commerce.
So, let me just, I consider that sort of like, down the line?
That is, great question. That's a part of the city of Inglewood. So, it will be east of the area that's in Inglewood. It's a, so, do you see the, the triangle of purple? And then, just below that is a yellowish rectangle. That's the Bayberry Trail subdivision.
Okay.
Just to give you an idea where, where we're talking about.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions of me before going to public, the public comment period?
All right.
Okay.
No questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dorman. Is the applicant presenting at the meeting tonight?
William and Mary Lauer, are you guys on the, the meeting through Zoom?
Yes.
Okay.
So, please state your name and address, and then make your presentation.
My name is William Lauer, 6892 Salem Avenue, and my wife, Mary. We have owned and resided at the property since 1977. I think that Seth Dorman has given an excellent presentation here as far as the proposal and the layout, and where the already zoned industrial land is. And our application for requesting a change in zoning simply stated, the east property line of the already zoned industrial acreage would only shift over 223 feet to the east, which is the width of our land. And the size of the acreage would increase from approximately 51.8 acres to approximately 58 acres. In order to have a progressive and vibrant city, you have to have commerce and industry. Businesses and industries generate revenue to the city, and they bring jobs into the city. That's all I really have to add. My wife and I would like to thank the Planning Commission and the City Council members for their consideration. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, William and Mary. Commissioners, do you have any additional questions for the applicant?
No, I do not.
No, I do not.
I will ask for a motion in a second to open the floor to public comment at this time. We have a motion?
Make a motion to open the public comment.
Second the motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Sim, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Bills?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
And Ms. Pritchett?
Aye.
Okay, the floor is now open to public comment. Those of you in the public that wish to make a comment, please raise your hand on the Zoom application.
And I would just tell anyone on the, the meeting, if you're not sure how to do that, go ahead and just unmute and introduce yourself, please.
I'm Wilma Schroder, 6822 Salem Avenue, three doors down from the Lauers. And I, I did send a letter in, a couple letters in, that I know the Planning Commission has, has read over, so I won't go back over that. But I do have concerns, living that close to property that's zoned for industrial, and how that's going to impact my property and my day-to-day living. And, and, but it sounds to me like it's a done deal.
No, I don't, I don't believe that's a done deal at this time. It's whether or not we make a recommendation to council for the zoning changes, what this meeting's about.
Right. Well, I, I have not quite three acres. I have a beautiful property that I enjoy with family and friends, and, and my granddaughter was married in my backyard two years ago. I mean, Terry Lauer would, would affirm how much time I spend in my yard. But I do worry about things like, could this impact my well water? And my property does sit lower than this industrial property. And do I have concerns about runoff? Yes. Truck traffic increase, I think you've affirmed that's going to happen. My property value, I, I don't, I just don't know what else to say. I'm, I'm just very unhappy about, about this change. It feels like you've put, you're putting an industry right between residential areas. There are people, you know, on both sides of that, of that acreage.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Has their hand raised? If you don't know how to do that, just unmute and speak up, please.
Darlene?
Okay.
Darlene Ingram?
I'm sorry?
Darlene Ingram?
Darlene Ingram? Do I have to unmute your microphone? Darlene?
She's unmuted too, so she shouldn't be able to talk.
Okay. So, go ahead and state your name and address. We might have to come back to Darlene. Is there anyone else with a hand up? And again, if any, if there's anybody else that wants to speak, and you don't know how to put the hand up on the Zoom application, then unmute your microphone and go ahead and, and tell her your name and address, please.
I would just like to say, while we're waiting for Darlene, in your packets, you have a letter from Carolyn Gerson. She lives in the Bayberry Trail subdivision. She initially sent me a letter of opposition and concern about the rezoning. I sent her some additional information back, and primarily to let her know that there, there are 51 acres to the west of this property that have already been rezoned for industrial, and that was approved in January of last year. She responded, just before I left for the afternoon, she said, "Thank you for the information. I guess it really doesn't matter whether you rezone the six acres or not due to the 51 acres already zoned." So, I just wanted to share that update with the commission.
All right. Thank you, Seth. Anyone else?
Darlene, this is all, you can try to ask her one more time, but other than that, that's all we can do.
So, Darlene, is, is your microphone unmuted? That should show up in the, probably the lower left, lower left of the bottom of the screen. It's a microphone with a red line through it. Click on it to unmute.
We're going to try to send her a quick text message, just to see if she sees that.
Oh, she said her speaker's not working.
Speaker's not working? Okay. Is she able to talk via her microphone, or is it just that she can't hear?
Uh, she says, she says my speaker's not working, so I think it's on her end.
You might suggest, I do this from time to time, I can't hear anything, and I realize my volume is toned down totally on my speakers. Ask her to check the volume control on her speaker. I don't know if you're sending text messages.
One other thing I might suggest, if we're not able to get Darlene, is if you wanted to read her letter into the record.
So, Darlene wrote a letter?
Darlene wrote a letter. Attention, Seth Dorman, I'm writing this letter as a neighbor at 6812 Salem Avenue, next door to Wilma Schroder, who received a letter about the above property requesting to be rezoned to light industrial from residential. I disagree with this change for the following reasons. This home is located between other homes, which means an, an industry would be in between homes. How would it affect our home values? The Lauers have not maintained their property and cannot sell it in its condition. Therefore, they want to sell it for industrial land. The traffic will increase with Caterpillar and CTC not far away. My home shakes with the increase of semis already, and would be much worse. A lot of these homes are still on well water and septic systems, and I'm concerned with contamination from an industry or disruption of land flow. I have lived here since 1991, and have always considered this as a rural area and a nice place to live. I would not feel that way if industry started to move in. I would not mind commercial as much as industrial. Please consider this to not be rezoned. Darlene Ingram. Any luck with Darlene? Any luck with Darlene?
I have the chat open, so you can tell her if she wants to say something in the chat, she can do that. I can tell you guys what she's saying, but, I mean, other than that.
Darlene, the chat function on Zoom is open. If you want to type in your comments above and beyond what was in your letter, go ahead and do so, and we'll read them into the record. So, for everybody that's attending this meeting, we're still trying to contact we're still trying to contact Darlene.
Commissioners, thank you. We just texted the meeting link to Darlene via her phone. She's going to try to get on that way. If we could just give her a couple minutes? She's not on yet. She's not about on yet. So Darlene was unable to get on, but she has a neighbor who's in the service, who's always gone. I don't know if deployed or stationed elsewhere, but her concern is whether or not they know about the rezoning request.
This is Wilma Schroder speaking. The property immediately next door to Lowers, the young man that lives there is in Iraq until May.
Okay, thank you.
I could call Darlene on my cellphone and have her come over here. I could do that.
I think we have read her letter into the record, and we've expressed her additional comment about the neighbor who's serving overseas. That neighbor would have been notified. Obviously, if they're not home, they would not have received the letter. But an attempt was made to notify them.
So are those letters sent certified mail?
They are not. They're sent regular mail, per the zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you. So if that's all of the comments from the public, I'd ask for a motion in a second to close the floor to public comment at this time.
I make a motion for the zoning district change.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I second it.
All right. Ms. Sim, can you call the roll?
Bills?
Aye.
Mr. Garner?
Aye.
Ms. Pritchett?
Aye.
All right. So is anybody, any of the commissioners wish to ask any questions or make any comments? So I will ask for a motion in a second to make a recommendation of approval, approval with conditions, or disapprove the zoning change.
I make a motion for approval, as stands. Garner?
I second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, for approval as written. Ms. Sim, please call the roll.
Bills?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
Ms. Pritchett?
Aye.
So the Planning Commission has recommended that City Council approve the zoning district change request for the northwest corner of National Road and Haber Road. Our next Planning Commission meeting is March 22, 2021. I will now accept a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn. Garner?
I second.
All favor of the motion to adjourn signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed signify by saying nay. The meeting is adjourned.